Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appropriately wearing his red jacket for this evening. Thank you. Do we have any closed session report? Item four?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
We'll move on to adoption of the agenda, and I know that we do have one item that has been requested to be postponed. If I could ask the town clerk to mention the amendment to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. We -- staff has received a request for Agenda Item 9A, the Mueller Duplex Use Permit Amendment, and the applicant is requesting that this item be postponed for an undetermined amount of time.
With no other changes to the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Move is -- move to adopt as amended?
Agreed. Approve.
Second?
Second.
You can tell we haven't met for a while. All in favor?
Got me like, aye. Say something, aye.
Mayor and Council, just briefly, as you alluded to, we do have a unique circumstance tonight with two council members out of town. As a result, a number of perfunctory votes tonight will require unanimous consent of the three of you in order to meet quorum requirements. In this particular case, any public hearing item, item approving a resolution, or an item approving a ordinance will require a majority of the quorum, which is five, so that would mean three, or in this case, a 3-0 vote.
So if there's a 2-1 vote on any item, then that is a no-pass, no-action taken?
That would be correct.
Okay. Town attorney, you want to add to that?
There -- well, that is correct with the -- actually, that is correct.
In terms of our agenda tonight, I think that applies to all of our items.
Yes.
Including consent?
That is correct.
Okay. We will proceed with that understanding. Moving on to public comment, so this is a time for members of the public to speak on anything that we do not have on our agenda, and I know that we do have a member of our community here wishing to speak. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Carla Reiff, R-E-Y-F-F. I live at 11 Forrester Lane in Yountville. In response to a recent column by our town manager, Steve Rogers, wherein he urged us to complain thoughtfully, I'd like to offer the following neighborhood observations directly to the town council as food for thought that you might want to consider at some future time. The first thing I'd like to bring up are the streets in Washington Park. About nine months ago, I brought the -- to the attention of Steve that the newly paved streets in Washington Park were really covered with grit and were not -- a lot of people were having problems with them, and I found that walking on them and tracking the grit into my house was really troubling, and in fact, one time, someone took a bottle of wine out of the back of my car, put it on the street, brought it into the house, put it on my table. I have a big gash in the middle of my table from the grit on the street that was on the bottom of the box. So Steve pointed out that other areas in town had been similarly paved and that it would probably bounce out within about a year after the rains came and people drove on it, et cetera, et cetera. Well, from my point of view, it's been getting worse, and different spots in that area are worse than others. I think that you have all -- John Dunbar, you have cement in front of your house, I believe. You don't really have the grit right near your front -- front of your house. So anyway, so some spots are worse, and it seems at the end of Forrester Street on the east side where I live that the grit keeps getting washed down there on a daily basis. And I have a little sample here. I want to put it in the record. Very easy to get. All I had to do was just go out and brush it up. I could have brought you boxes of this stuff. So this is what we're talking about. And it does affect my house, and I've noticed other people in the area vacuuming the grit up. So it is a problem, and it hasn't gotten better after the rains and the time has gone on. And then now I've noticed after the hot weather last week that there's tar seeping up through the cracks and that the cracks that were there before are more eroded. The street is worse than it was a year ago when you had the job done. So the solution might be to have the company that did the job come in and really sweep it through. I notice when the town goes through and sweeps it, all they do is kind of stir it around and then it comes back. Maybe they should go in and sweep it through and -- or clean it up, or maybe you're still under guarantee and warranty, I don't know, but definitely, if you're ever going to do this anywhere else, please, think twice before using this company. They really did a terrible job. And you'll notice, John, if you go out and walk down at your end of the street, it's changed in the last couple of weeks because of the heat. So that was my first item I wanted to point out, and as long as we're talking about Washington Park, I wanted to point out that on Forrester Lane where I live, the one block from the house next door to me to the end of the block, there are 11 homes that are not occupied. They're not rentals, they are vacation homes, and sometimes the people come once a year. I'm not complaining that they're renting them out, but I'm just saying that they're vacant, and that might be something to consider when you're talking about the population of Yountville, how many people don't live here, particularly in Washington. And there's a lot more in Washington Park than just on Forrester. That's just on our end of the street. I wanted to bring up a little something about the pool. I was disappointed that you raised the fees for the children as of July 1st. They went up a dollar, and I feel that that was probably unnecessary. The pool's never going to make money. The dollar that you collect from the kids in terms of this town's budget and the money that you draw in is nothing, and I think it's kind of unfair to the children who live here, who probably need the pool the most, that they're being sort of taxed on using their own pool. And also, I'm a little disappointed that you have to close the pool on Labor Day. I know I brought this up a couple of years ago, and you weren't able to get lifeguards after Labor Day, but it seems that September is our hottest time of the year. It's the time we need the pool the most, and if there was some way you could find lifeguards to work, maybe just on weekends in September, dry it out if it gets hot like it did last week, to have some use of that gorgeous pool instead of having it sit up there with no one there using it. It really is a lovely facility. And last but not least, a very small item, but nonetheless, if you happen to not have a copier in your home, which I bet all of you do, or if you don't, you have used or access to one here, you're not aware of the fact that our one copier for the public in the ranch market is gone. We do have a copier in the library, but that's only open three days a week, and there are people in this town, lots of little old ladies, who need to make the occasional copier or two, and all of a sudden, they have to go to Napa to do it if it happens to be on a day the library's closed, and they don't drive. So it is kind of a burden. I was going to suggest if there was some way, I don't know how, you could consider maybe that people who live here who can prove they live here can, if they don't abuse a privilege, use some of the town's copiers and pay the 15 cents or whatever it is, just as a sort of a little bonus for living here from your town. Those are my suggestions and comments, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I appreciate that, and I know staff was vigorously writing down comments for -- you hit several of our departments with some of your concerns, so appreciate you bringing up those issues. I just know personally, on your first item, I have already been having a few conversations with town staff about the street conditions in Washington Park in particular, and having to go on Forrester every day, I enter and leave my home, I know what you're talking about, and we're looking at what the options are that we have. You know, we can't really go into too many details
Sure.
Now, but I appreciate you bringing up these issues, but just know that we are looking at the conditions of the surface alternatives, if they are appropriate, if there's any remedy with the contractor.
I hope you do. I don't think it's been quite a year yet, so maybe you still have some kind of a guarantee.
But Graham and Steve and the rest of the Public Works team are very aware of it, and we're looking into alternatives.
Thank you. One last very brief comment. You might notice in front of my house, I feed the birds a lot, and what I have noticed when I throw this bread out there, something in the bread, when it gets wet, sort of keeps the grit down. That's my solution, my temporary solution. And do you want this for the record? Sure.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that have any other comments or concerns tonight? No, with that, I'll move on from our public comment portion, and we're going to move on to our consent calendar. And did we have any particular items that needed to be pulled from the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
Okay. If there -- again, we need to just -- reminder that we need a -- anyway.
Commanders, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go, our first -- second official 3-0.
There we go.
Okay, well, we'll move on to presentation. Recognition of Rob Wenenberg for his service on the zoning and design review board, and I'll ask Rob if you could please join me at the podium so I could present you with a little token of our appreciation for your years of service. I'd just like to read this plaque that we'd like to give to you from the town of Yountville, Rob Wenenberg, in appreciation of your service on the zoning and design review board, June 16th, 2009 through July 19th, 2012, on behalf of the Yountville Town Council and staff. Thank you very much for your service. Council of town, feel free.
Just briefly, for those people who don't know out there, we went from having two Robs and three Bobs at our ZDRB meetings to now having two Jasons, two Bobs, and a Rob. So just so it's easier for everybody to differentiate. It was a lot of fun, I really enjoyed it.
Thank you very much. And also, Rob, just a reminder that you get to take that little cover with you as well. Thanks very much, you've been a great asset to the ZDRB, and we'll miss you, but I know you'll still be with us in spirit every one of those Tuesday nights. Okay, we're going to move on to Item 9B. A reminder, 9A has been pulled by the applicant's request. So we're going to move on to 9B, which is the Wayfinding Sign Program, and we have two parts to this. First is the introduction and first reading of the ordinance, and the second part is consideration for adoption of a resolution amending the master fee schedule. So please start with the staff report.
Thank you. The ordinance that was included in your packet summarizes the direction and the discussions of the business community and town council for the Wayfinding Sign Program and incorporates it into an additional section to our sign ordinance that gets added by this ordinance. And also, the resolution adds two fees, administrative fees associated with the program that are the initial application fee and the annual subscription fee, renewal fee for the subscription program. The ordinance is fairly short, and I will go through it. If you have any questions, we can cover those. So that's what this is -- this public hearing is about, and it's also, the recommendation is to adopt. We received a letter of support from Jan Factor of V Marketplace that's in your packet. If you have any questions about the ordinance, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I was going to just mention that letter when we got to the public comment portion, but there was a letter from Jan Factor, Managing General Partner of V Marketplace, specifically supporting the program and commenting that the majority of shop owners also have demonstrated support. So that's a letter from Jan Factor.
I would also like to add that some comments about the letter we've sent out and the application for the subscription program and give you a summary of what's happened there. We've sent out a total of 72, made 72 contacts with businesses, and we received about 40 responses back in applications for the program, and that represents about 150 sign plaques at this point. There are many of these businesses have expressed an interest in additional sign plaques beyond the basic four, so the number could easily approach 200 very quickly. These will be on the 13 post locations that we identified in the application. One thing we did learn from the response to the application is that, and as you can see in that table that was included in the staff report showing the distribution of the 13 posts and the frequency of interest at each one, will most likely be consolidating at least one of the posts due to lack of interest at that particular location. So, and also, interestingly, the post at the point turned out to be the most popular location, probably because it's at a crossroads, and we've got quite a few responses interested in that location. Out of the 11 hotels, we received applications from five of the hotels. 17 of the applications are from V Marketplace alone. We have some tasting rooms that we are going to -- well, we're going to be contacting a number of additional businesses to ensure everybody understands the program and make sure that they get their application in if they're interested. We've only had four of the tasting rooms respond out of the 15. We've received applications from eight of the 15 restaurants. So pretty good response so far, but we will be contacting the businesses that have not responded as well as the ones that have. We're going to be contacting the applicants to ensure their locations are correct, that their text that they've submitted on the sign is correct. Some of them, we need to discuss their descriptions with to make sure they stay within the perimeters of the program guidelines. Also, one thing we also learned is the -- done a study of what they have put down for their requested name of their business, and that gave us some good information on the width of the -- either the width of the plaques got to increase or we've got to adjust the text size. Some of them are a little longer than we anticipated. And also, we need to make sure they understand the directional arrow is indicating as you approach a business, it's -- we can't show an arrow behind, so we make sure they understand that aspect of the program.
Any questions about the report, Councilwoman Mueller?
Actually, it's a question that's in the ordinance number 406-12. Under Section B4, it says the business must be open on weekends. Is that Saturday and Sunday, Saturday or Sunday? I just thought, you know, we might want to clarify that.
Okay.
Some people thought, if I'm open on Saturday and not Sunday, I can't join, so just a thought.
We can stipulate Saturday and Sunday, but the one below it allows some exceptions to that.
So if somebody's closed on Sunday, they can still participate?
Yes. Depends on the nature. Of course, they otherwise have to comply with the categories of businesses that are eligible.
Right. Right.
And it doesn't explicitly say you have to be open the entire weekend, but I understand there might be some interpretation left.
I think, so Bob, you're saying that what this says now is they should be open Saturday and Sunday?
That would imply that, and we can be clear, or at least one weekend day, if you wish to amend that.
That's fine with me, one weekend day.
At least Saturday or Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
If that's the intent of the language, that might clarify it.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Or, Councilwoman Mueller, any other questions of staff?
Nope.
Councilmember Hall?
It's good.
Hey, Bob, just a quick question. So I believe what I understand here is we're going to consolidate posts 11 and 12, correct? And where are we going to consolidate, to the west side near Masonry or the east side of Padrone?
I've not made that decision yet.
Okay.
We'll get out in the field and have a look at what would be the -- I think we're really getting good data from, as all the applications come in and after we contact additional businesses and see where the additional signs of the businesses that have responded are ready, where they would like to go, then we probably get a better idea of what would make the most sense as far as the location.
Okay. And then you said you'd sent out 40 or 72 contracts and had 40 applications, or you made 72 contacts and had 40 applications. That's roughly correct?
That's correct.
So that's really, that's very significant. That's 55 percent penetration, but I want to make sure I understood, because I read 121 posts had been basically applied for at this point in time, but you gave me a different number at the beginning. I didn't write that, was it 150?
Yeah, and that, the numbers you were getting were as of the time of the writing of the staff report
Yes.
And additional applications came in after that, and so the latest numbers are the ones, the higher ones, yeah.
150. So the total available spaces is 264, that's 11 times 12 times 2. Right, 11 signs, 12 posts, two sides.
Well, those are total signs.
Okay.
So the issue is, on some of the posts, we have one side of the post, because of the direction it's headed, is we're getting a lot, and then we've got a couple that
Oh, I see. If they're on one end of town, you don't want to go that direction.
Yeah, and there's nothing
Got it, okay.
The other way, so we might get a lot more exposure
Then my next question, I'll withdraw.
On one side than the other, and yeah.
Got it. So although there would be theoretically 264 available units, you wouldn't necessarily sell the 11 going the direction north out of town on the north side of Vintage?
That's correct.
Yeah, or one of the hotels.
And some of them, this is strictly businesses at this point that are interested in plaques. We will be adding some plaques for walking distance and some other information of public facilities, maybe
Parks and
Points of interest.
Yes.
Points of interest, okay. Great. No, thank you, this is good information. I'm glad to see that the business community's embraced it. It's great.
Couple of questions I had, Bob. One, is there been consideration to doing a partial installation as opposed to doing all of the posts to make sure that we are getting what we're thinking we're getting, and it might also be a marketing tool? Clearly, the V Marketplace Point area is the hottest spot. If we were to install there potentially, I don't know if there's any economy of scale about putting in all 12 posts at once, or if we can put in a few, let them kind of settle, make sure that we are satisfied with the locations of all the others. Has there been thought about that?
At this point, I think what we were trying to achieve is assess the interest and the distribution, and it's been, it's been good to learn that through this exercise. We could do a, we hadn't considered like a pilot kind of a post or two. It has a lot to do with the distribution up and down Washington of the businesses that everybody, everybody's anxious to have it. So would the, would the objective of a pilot post be to generate more interest or to see if there's additional people that want in that location, want a plaque in that location, or?
Well, my concern is that 13 or now 12 posts is too many posts, and if we don't need 12, but we installed 12 and then realize, oh, maybe we didn't need 12, maybe we only needed nine, then we're taking three out or we're wasting three spots. I worry a little bit about the over signage, but I also understand the need for connectivity also.
Right, and I think that you just identified one of the key issues, and there are multiple goals in our program. We have certain situations that we call the, you know, businesses that are not readily apparent, and a good example is you're in front of V Marketplace, but what does it mean? And there's 20-some businesses in there, so they're interested. And the other, another real goal is the connection of the south to the north. So there, that's where that linkage and that connectivity, or if you're a fan of Hansel and Gretel, the breadcrumbs, you know, how do I get somebody from this location to continue on the path northward? We share the concern about over signage, and I do want to remind everybody, we're talking about something that is a pedestrian-scale, five-foot. It's not, not something that's angled for reading on the streets, and when you talk about going, you know, we're basically talking in core areas, one a block letting you know, and then you, at the other end of the block, so that you get there, you know there's still something going. So that's where the consolidation is coming when we're seeing that. But from, you asked a very good question about economy of scale. Unfortunately for us, because of the actual size of this program, reducing it actually has the potential to increase the cost, because, believe it or not, even though this seems like a large program for us, it does not trigger large quantity production orders from the manufacturers. So from a standpoint of staff, the amount of energy we're putting into, it really doesn't distribute. And I also do want to echo what Bob is saying. We have a, you know, significant, probably 80 percent interest level demonstrated at North Yountville, approximately 75 percent coming out of the V Marketplace. We know we have other people that have, in previous conversations with us, told us they were interested, but they haven't completed an application, which is why Bob has indicated we will make a full double effort to go out and contact businesses that haven't responded to make sure that their lack of response truly indicates they're not interested, and some have told us, meh, I don't need it. Maybe I'll change my mind, and we expect that there might be some. And as Bob mentioned, we have other businesses that said, if you tell me I can have more than four, I'll buy more than four.
And that, sorry.
I was going to add that one criteria we established was the minimum of four plaques. If we're getting less interest than four on a side, on a post, then we will examine eliminating that post or consolidating with another, except for the locations Steve mentioned that are the connectors at Weber and the park at Hopper Creek that establish that link between the north Washington area and the central area. Those, even though they may only have a couple of signs on them, those are going to be important to keep people on track and along the way they're directed to the north portion.
But it sounds like, to kind of get back to my original question, you are still evaluating as you go forward and get more applications in and sell more blades to confirm that the locations that you selected are still all viable?
That's correct.
So, okay. Great. I'll open the public hearing on this item and invite anyone from the public that would like to speak to it, to do so now. If there's anyone of interest, please.
I have my notes on my phone, excuse me here. Okay. Do I need to introduce myself, or?
Yes, please, for the record, for the world that's watching online.
So my name is Boyd Dennington, I'm a local business owner, and I had some few comments here, which now I can't find.
Doctor's very high-tech of you, by the way.
It's not working, though. Better living through technology, maybe not. What's that?
Is that a smart phone?
It, well, it's not being smart, or that, or I'm not smart, I couldn't tell you. So I just wanted to make a compliment sandwich, that way hopefully my negative comments are maybe a little bit more well-received. I don't know whose idea this was to start this program, but I would definitely give two thumbs up to whoever that is. Anyone here? Okay, well.
It's the one you're going to say that.
Yeah. We'll wait until you're finished with your comments, and then I'll give two thumbs.
Well, I think it's a great idea, so thank you for establishing the program. One thing I'm a little disappointed in, actually, kind of a question, can I ask you a question?
Actually, if you could just go ahead and address us, and then we'll direct your questions
Okay.
After you're finished.
Sorry, first time.
That's all right.
The thing about being open Saturday and Sunday, I wasn't, maybe I didn't receive that. My business is in V Marketplace, so Jan Factor gives me all the communication about this project, and I hadn't seen anything saying that in order to be a participant, you had to be open on weekends, so I guess that's one of my questions. But what I was somewhat disappointed in is I did read some language in something I received saying that my type of business would kind of come second, and I understand that hotels and tasting rooms and restaurants produce a lot more in tax revenue for the town, and that's great. If we didn't have that, then we wouldn't have all the other nice things that we enjoy here. At the same time, every time I pick up the Yountville Sun, I see people asking for more local services and more local serving businesses, which is something that I provide, and I know that there's a lot of stores in V Marketplace that are going to be crowding up the sign, and I just hope that I have a spot in there, so clearly I'm biased, but anyway. And then, I guess to make the sandwich complete, the final designs that I've seen are also looking really good, so I don't know who was all involved in that, but good job. So, and I know there's been other meetings about this program, and this is the first one I've been to, so I apologize for that. I forgot about a few and wasn't informed about some others, so, but I'll be here from here on out. I wish some of the other business owners would come as well and show support, but anyway, I'm here. That's all, thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments, and I'll ask staff to address those once, in case anyone else from the public is speaking, but we'll come back and answer. I know that we can answer at least a couple of your comments, for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other members like to comment? If not, I'll go, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll just invite Bob to answer, one had, one question had to do with the priority business types. I know that had been an issue throughout the planning process, and then also, if you want to take credit for this entire program. I know it's been a kind of a group effort, both with business and staff, but if you could maybe just address a couple of those public concerns.
Yes, the program was designed to assist mainly visitors to where businesses are located rather than be a form of advertising, if you will. But overriding But overriding that, we'll say the numbers, distribution of the locations of requested signs would look like we're gonna be able to accommodate all those who have submitted an application, and I have your application, so it's in the, in the mix right now. We, going in, anticipated that businesses that are perhaps not open on weekends, or businesses that are essentially offices, would be on a second tier, and that's the way the ordinance is structured, and still is. Giving priority over those types of businesses to those that are open more, and more of interest to maybe the visitor. But nevertheless, they, it looks as though we're gonna be able to supply, have a supply available for all those who've submitted applications at this point.
And to address the concern about the requirement for weekend business, is there a specific thought to, I know you touched on why that is, that this isn't necessarily just an extension of business signage, but is there, from the conversations at all the meetings, you came to that conclusion for a reason?
It was, yeah, linked to that. However, we would also recognize that the tier-two businesses, some of them may not be open on weekends, and, and that's why we added the exception clause in number five, B5.
I, I do like to use an opportunity to clarify. Bob's comments are, I think we should clarify, we presented several different models and did a number of research, as some of you are aware, on other programs, and the merchants indicated the things that they were interested, and these are actually policy recommendations in the program that came out of the merchant focus group in terms of a, a tiering priority. So, from our perspective, we're trying to respect the feedback that those organizations or those members provided. And again, there is a clause in our provision that has exceptions that allows for real estate. It gives us an ability to ensure programs, but that was, you're correct, that is a deliberate intention in terms of the tiering, was a tier-one and two based on the feedback from the business focus group.
I think the important thing to take away from the public comment is, it's not a prohibition for non-weekend businesses, but it is, there is a priority system that's been proposed here, and so it would be a lower, a lower level of priority to have weekday-only businesses. And, but there is that, that point made in the B5 that addresses exceptions to the criteria may be considered, so an exception being a Monday through Friday business and a non-visitor-based business can certainly be included. I think those were, did that cover all your comments?
Yes.
More thumbs up, good, that's, oh, and, and I think Bob and the rest of, and Sandra get a lot of our credit for doing this, and, and some of our business owners have stepped forward and, and helped partner with you on, on making this all come together, so they're the ones that get the credit. But we, of course, take the credit up here publicly.
Can I ask another question based on that discussion? So, if a second-tier business gets approved because it's first come, first served, and there's room, there's no provision here that they're gonna get knocked out if a tier-one comes in?
No, it, once the, once they're in the program, they
Okay.
Purchase their signs, they're, they're in.
As long as they pay their bills, they're good.
Right.
Okay.
And there, there is always the opportunity that if there are unused blades, that once all the applications are satisfied, additional blades could be purchased, is that accurate?
That is correct, yes. So far, we've only received two tier-two applications, so not a big demand from, from that tier.
And we're really learning as we go, so we're, you know, it's good that you're giving us some of this feedback, and we got a lot of good feedback from the business community in, in the meetings we've had, but we're just trying to make everybody happy, and we're still learning how to best do that also. So, I'll return the conversation back to council, is there any other discussion on this item? Is there a motion? We have two parts to this item. The first would be the introduction and first reading of the ordinance, and there's been a proposal by Councilmember Mueller to modify the language of
B4.
B4, to state businesses must be open either Saturday or Sunday.
Should it be the businesses?
And/or Sunday.
Should be or shall be, if we want to make it?
Yes, you should, the business shall be open on
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
Saturday or Sunday.
Okay.
So, a change, okay, so that would be my amendment to B4, the business shall be open at least Saturday or Sunday, because we have the exception rule in number five that we just took care of.
Would you like to make that adjustment in the form of a motion?
I would, thank you. I'd like to move to approve ordinance number 406-12, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Yanville, amending the Yanville Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 17.92 Signs to add addition, 17, add section 17.92.120, establishing regulations for the Wayfinding Sign Program with the modification to section B4, that businesses shall be open on at least Saturday or Sunday.
Second?
Do we do need a 3-0 vote for this item?
Yes, and that's a motion to introduce and waive the reading, right?
Introduce and waive the reading.
And
That's your motion.
That's my motion, thank you.
So, a motion to introduce and waive that reading with the amended language, there's been a motion and a second, and we do require a 3-0 vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's your 3-0 vote. Now, we need to discuss the second part of this item, the master fee schedule. Bob, did you want to touch on that item in particular?
Briefly, the, the ordinance establishes a structure to the program that has a process that involves town staff at the, both the initial application review to ensure the criteria of the program and the guidelines are met, and then also there's a annual subscription renewal fee that is applied, and that's an administrative effort as well, and that, there's additional maintenance efforts by staff that, and also paying down some of the hard costs of the posts that that money will be applied towards. Those two fees need to be added to the master fee schedule, and that's what the purpose of the resolution is.
And I'm gonna treat this as a separate public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and invite members of the public to comment on the fee schedule portion of this item, if anyone is interested, and if not, I'll close the public hearing portion of this particular item. Are there, first of all, I should have asked other questions of staff about the second report, and if not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll motion, make, I'll move to approve Resolution 3044-12, approving an amendment to the master fee schedule to add program fees for the Wayfinding Sign Program.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
A unanimous vote as well. Thank you very much, and thanks to staff for the many hours and meetings that you have done, and thanks to the business community represented by our one individual tonight, Doctor, thank you for being here, but thanks also for the business community to help us craft this new ordinance that will come back to us for formal adoption at a future date. We're gonna move on to administrative items now, Recycled Water Project. We'll start off with the staff report.
Very briefly, as you all know, the Recycled Water Project's been a long-term, ongoing project. One of the vehicles we're looking at is, for our financing, is a low-interest loan from the state revolving loan fund from the Department of Finance, as it's administered by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and they require a rather extensive and involved application process, and one of which is a, you all have to approve staff's ability to apply for and complete the application, and the resolution before you is that such resolution authorizing the town manager to pursue, it's not an obligation, you're not entering into the loan, but this is simply to provide the direction for staff, and I will point out that this is a follow-up item, and it is consistent with the direction that the council has given with regard to this capital improvement project to secure the financing, so it's a necessary first step towards that goal.
Okay, any questions of staff, town manager, Councilmember Mueller?
I, I just want some clarification on some of the numbers. So, the proposal is to, you're gonna be requesting a loan amount of about 3.4 million, and then I was confused because in the resolution, it's up to 5 million, but in the staff report, it wasn't to exceed 2.4 million, so if you could put all those numbers for me together, I'd appreciate it.
The real short answer to that one is, we put the most extreme on the application because you can reduce the amount, and our goal, based on the previous council direction, is indeed to, to have the preferred project, when we ultimately approve it, be either the project, minimum project at 1.4 million, or the 2.4. But for the application process, what we need to do is identify the outcome, and we don't want to be in a situation where we get approved for, say, 1.4 million, and we ultimately need the 2.4, because that's how they look at it. And there is also the potential, depending on the grant structure, of some recovery for the approaching 900,000 that we've already encumbered and spent for the design and planning. So that's why you see that number moving up a bit, it's, it's calculating all of the cost potentially.
The other one is that with the federal government and the US Bureau of Reclamation, we may get grants in the future, and so that would reduce that amount, but until Congress takes action and appropriates funding, we can't count on that money. But we did learn that we could build the project, and then in the future, Congress could put money, could be five or more years later, some projects around the Area Recycled Water Coalition have, have had projects they've built, and then Congress appropriated the money in the future, so that would reduce the amount of money that would, we'd have for the loan.
So, the, the loan is 3.4, you're maximizing it to capture the high end that we really don't want to go to.
Right.
2.4 plus the 900 you spent, therefore it's 3.4. Okay, so that, and so then you wrote the resolution to cover 5 million to take care of another 1.4 million that you might apply for in the future?
Well, the 5, we're, we don't anticipate we'd ever go that high, but that's sort of, just to give, let them know there's a cap, that we're not gonna go above that amount, because they do look at the financing of how much money's available, or, you know, the interest rate on the amount and all.
You will bring, we will bring back, and again, the 5 million that you're seeing there is more of a cap, in other words, there's a range when the program's looking forward, and that says, it's just like if you may remember about two years ago, when we were doing the Energy Conservation Loan, and we applied under one program, and then the program timeline shifted, and we had to bring you back a resolution because we put should not exceed 125,000, and they bumped it to like 150, so we had to redo all the paperwork. So again, we're using the 5 million is a range, it's not a commitment, and we will
Because our, our target is still about 1.4 to build water lines that we don't have.
That's our preference, but this is, again, you're providing the direction, the final loan documents and approval will come back to the council when, when that's been secured. So, again, that's the outer range, and we've learned from our prior experiences to use the alter, outer ranges rather than the minimums.
Councilmember Hall, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
No, nor do I. I think that's the, the point that I was going to make the town manager just made, which is we are only authorizing the request for funding, we are not authorizing a commitment to that funding at this point, so, again, I invite any members of the public to comment on this item if you'd like. Neither red shirt is moving forward, so I'll invite council discussion and potential action.
I have a comment.
Councilmember Hall.
Um, you know, I just want to say that, you know, we've gone through with presentations from consultants this project a couple of times, and, you know, the, the Town of Yanville is very fortunate in that we could even consider going out and applying for a loan like this. I think it's the responsible thing for us as an enterprise and as a municipality to be able to fund our own ways, so I'm supportive of this process, and I trust that we'll be able to find reasonable funds from wherever ultimately the grants or the actual funding will come from, but this is the responsible thing for this town to do, we've got the means to, I believe we have the means to do it, from what our finance director is telling me, and, you know, we should be basically setting ourselves up as the, the pillar that other enterprises and municipalities look at to try to model themselves after, and this is the right thing for us to do, and it's mandated, so we should finance it the right way, and that's find the money as cheaply as we can, so I support the, the recommendation and the resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments, Councilmember Mueller, or is there an?
I agree, no, fine.
I'll make a motion, then.
You need to do it, yeah.
Uh, move to resolve, approve Resolution Number 3045-12, authorizing the town manager to apply for financial assistance from the State Water Resources Control Board to may provide assistance for the state mandated recycled water expansion project WW-0002.
Well, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Very much, another unanimous vote, and thank you, Councilmember Hall, for putting the comments very well, I think you could speak for all of us on that item. Moving on to informational reports, item 11, Budget in Brief. We don't have a brief budget.
Well, no, we don't, we have a full book, which, if you haven't checked your mailboxes, they've been distributed, but recognizing that not everyone wants to go through the book, we've redone our Budget in Brief, same format as previous years, so that's also distributed, it's available for the public, both on the back wall, we encourage them to take copies, it's also posted on the finance page, website, and just gives a nice snapshot of our general fund and where our money comes from, and how we spend the money that we get. And if I might just add one more quick item?
Another reward, you can always add that.
We received, well, we've already talked about it, but Steve likes to show off the hardware, so I brought the plaque that we received for our
Same one from last?
June 30, 2011, Caffer. It's been updated, Arnold.
Thank you.
So, we'll be changing that out in the lobby with our most current version.
Great. Any comments from the council? I, I find this very helpful, it's also a real good snapshot for the public to get a summary of what we go through
Absolutely.
Forty-two or forty-three work sessions to achieve, so
Forty-four.
Thank you, and congratulations again to you and your support team that helps make it so not only transparent and effective, but others in the industry see your professionalism and your quality, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more item.
Yes.
We've gone from very hot weather to some foggy, wet weather, which has somewhat delayed our painting of the tennis courts, but we anticipate they should be painted this week, and we'll unlock the gates and let people start playing out there, so I wanted to pass on that.
So, the resurfacing is finished, except for that.
The painting, so everything else is done.
And I know that there were some concerns brought up by, one member of the public specifically contacted me, and I can't remember if it was the entire staff, the council, but concern about the non-tennis activities on the courts, specifically turning it into a dog park.
Right.
So, I know that the staff's aware of it and is trying to educate the public on
Yeah, there are
Damage to especially our branding courts.
Yeah, well, there are signs, they have been there for quite a while, they say no dogs, we're gonna be adding some more signs about reservations, so people can reserve the courts. The Recreation Guide has the training, or the, you know, classes that people can take, teens and adults, so we are looking forward to it, we've spruced up the courts a bit, done some fixes, and we're looking forward to having those utilized and enjoyed by the public.
Fantastic.
And hopefully folks will, will get that message that, to respect not only the public property, but their neighbors' ability to use those courts in other areas in town, so, good, thank you very much. Any other informational reports from staff? Okay, if not, we'll go on to council meeting reports and comments, do we, can any of us remember all the meetings that we have attended in the last several weeks? Councilmember Mueller?
Good one. Uh, yes, I attended the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority meeting on June the 21st, and at that meeting, we approved the, the rate increases, and I think it's great news for the public to hear that Garbage Service in Town, trash, recycling included, will only be increasing 1.2% this year versus the about 6% last year, so I kept a very careful eye on their budget, and so I'd like to think that contributed to our, our 1%. Additionally, the, there's been, we decided Additionally, the, there's been, we decided to raise the fee at Clover Flat by a dollar per ton. It was $3 a ton. Now it's going to be $4 per ton. And that extra dollar is going to go into a pool of money that's going to be set, set aside for hazardous household waste cleanup. And I will be making sure that Yountville gets on that agenda. This year, it's going to be in October. We haven't set the date yet. It will be at the, in Calistoga at the Napa County Fairground. So that's the report from that board.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hall, do you have any
I have no meetings.
Meeting reports? Okay.
Thank you.
I did want to just go back, I have to go back a ways for this one particular Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency update, but we are, the, a new executive director was hired, Kate Miller, and she has already taken over and is learning the ropes. She came from AC Transit in the East Bay. And so, welcome to, to Kate. Also, I just wanted to mention, one of the other action items was that the board approved putting up courtesy signs for no, no smoking at bus shelters along the transit lines. These are not specific to bus stops that are not shelters, but full-on shelters where folks have complained that there's no way for them to get away, get away from the smoke if it's happening in the small confines of a shelter. So there are going to be courtesy signs posted for people to respect their fellow riders' space. So those are going to be installed, probably in the process already of being installed at this point, since the meeting was a few weeks ago. Also, as town, our planning staff is probably aware, our next housing allocation numbers are, have been tentatively assigned to us as 17 new units coming up in the next cycle, which is considerably lower than the original numbers that were being proposed by the Association of Bay Area Governments. And so it's a very positive thing for us, I think. We, we have our challenges about how we're going to continue absorbing the state mandatory housing growth. But one of the interesting aspects of, of this cycle is the, Napa County is going to be a subregion of the RENA or the housing allocation process. We will have the ability to potentially trade units amongst our subregion members if that becomes an issue. It may not be so much of an issue for us as it is some of the other cities, but it could be. You know, if we have a hard time finding those 17, we can talk to the county or potentially one of our other neighbors about maybe trading the
American Canyon, I want to.
American Canyon could be interested. So. And also, the city of Napa is, has applied, and their application has been accepted. It still needs to be ratified, but they are requesting to be designated as a PDA, which is a planned development area that would allow them to qualify for additional funding associated with housing allocation numbers. American Canyon is the only other that has been designated a PDA area. So that might be happening also in the city of Napa. Those are my meeting reports. Any other comments from council? I do want to touch on a couple of things. I'll, before I forget, I just wanted to say congratulations again for 4th of July, not only the great fireworks show that the Veterans Home helped partner with the Town of Yountville to, to perform. Thankfully, they did not all ignite at once, like down in the city of San Diego. But thank you again for the partnership with the vets home. I think, you know, we had at least a couple thousand people out there, I believe, that really enjoyed the whole afternoon up at the Veterans Home with booths for food and drink and stage performances. Baseball field was in full use, the swimming pool, everything was really clicking for that 4th of July, even being on a Wednesday.
Kids' games?
Kids' games, yes. I also wanted to acknowledge the Thomas Keller Restaurant Group and, and Bouchon Restaurant in particular, Bouchon Bistro, for their Bastille Day celebration. I know there are other Bastille celebrations around town, but specifically because they embraced the whole community, including our town manager, Steve Rogers, who took my place representing the town in the dung tank. And if anyone has checked Facebook or, I think, the website postings, you could see that some of us were successful in, in cooling off our town manager. But the proceeds from the, the family activities are going toward the elementary school. So thanks to the whole team at Bouchon, Chef Keller, several of the managers, even managers from other restaurants, and our local Kiwanis was also represented in the dung tank. So that was quite a popular activity last Saturday. Any other announcements? No? Mystery writers, yes, it's coming up. Thank you for reminding me. This Sunday, and Sam is also going to remind me exactly, is it 4:30? Go ahead. Please give us a report on our
Oh, sure.
Second Annual Mystery Writers
Second Annual Mystery Writers Event this Sunday. We have four New York Times bestselling mystery writers here in Yountville, which is pretty huge. Starting at 5 o'clock with the reception, 6 o'clock, they'll have a panel discussion and answer questions, as well as book signing. And it's free. So come on out.
It'll be at our community center.
At our community center, yes.
I look forward to it. I, I really enjoyed emceeing that last year, and I will be doing it again this year. And we have an additional writer this year, which is great. And they are very talented, and they work really well together. And they, if anyone is interested in what it takes to be a writer, and specifically how to craft really compelling mysteries, they're really a fun group to, to engage with. So come on out to the community center. And we are also in the very early stages of working on our Fall Wellness Fair.
We are.
So look forward to hearing more about that in the coming weeks. That'll be in September, we're anticipating.
September 15th. Mark your calendars.
All right. With that, it's only 7 o'clock. I'm not sure, not sure what to do right now.
I do.
I think we should go into an elongated closed session or something.
I know what to do.
Do we, do we have need for a closed session?
I can speak slowly, so if you make sure we at least get an hour. And the answer is no, we do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, then I will entertain a motion for adjournment to our next regularly town, regularly scheduled town council meeting of Tuesday, August 7th at 6:00 PM.
It needs to be unanimous, remember. Move to approve our next meeting to be held on Tuesday, August 7th at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Do we need a roll call vote for this?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Thanks, everyone. And again, thank you, Rob, for your service, and see you all next time.